Okay, good evening. This is the January 26, 2021 regular meeting of the New Canaan, Connecticut Planning and Zoning Commission. As everyone can tell, we're it's a Zoom call. Lynn is running the meeting as usual, the town planner. And just one reminder to commissioners as well as speakers kindly try to remember to use your name when you speak. And we'll start off by doing a roll call per COVID Zoom. Practice, John Goodwin, I'm here, Jane Grislecki.
Here.
John Chris.
President.
Dan Radman.
Here.
Claire Tascornia.
Here.
Ken Turner.
Here, and greetings, everyone.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Arthur Cassavant.
Here.
And Chris Herring.
Here.
Okay, great. And on the subject of Chris Herring, I want to welcome Chris to the commission as an alternate. And Chris joined us from the Parking Commission. And Chris, if you take a minute, just tell us a little bit about your background, please.
Thank you, John. Again, this is Chris Herring. Really excited to join the Planning and Zoning Commission. As John mentioned, I've been on the Parking Commission for the past three years. And at the opportunity of when the seat came up, I put my name in the hat to be nominated and I'm very pleased to join the commission. So a little background about myself, I and my family, we moved up from New York City about 10 years ago. I have three young kids, seven, 10, and 12. Grew up in New York City with my wife. And from a professional perspective, I went to college in Connecticut and prep school in Connecticut and spent a lot of time in Connecticut. But my role today, from a professional perspective, is I work for Oracle Corporation, a global software vendor. I run our global education program for our partners. So what that means is I put together our partner onboarding and partner education forum. And as far as my interest in the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm very personally interested in planning and certainly believe in our town and love the town that we live in and plan to continue many years here with my children. So very interested in contributing to this commission and see the built environment as a very important contributing factor to our quality of life.
Great, Chris, and welcome aboard. And I also want to thank Keith Ritchie, who's the Chair of the Parking Commission. We all know how it is, how hard it is to find great commissioners and Keith gave a wonderful recommendation for Chris and but is losing him as a commissioner. So thanks to Keith. Okay, let's get going to the meeting. Public hearing, item number one. 66 Osborne Lane, upon application of Amy Zabatakas Authorized Agent for Massimo and Vicky Magny Owners for a special permit approval of Sections 371 to allow proposed structure to exceed building coverage and place restriction on building height for a portion of the property located in the two acre zone at 66 Osborne Lane. Ms. Zabatakas.
Hi, good evening all. My name is Amy Zabatakas. I'm an attorney with Rucci Law Group, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Vicky Magny and Massimo Magny. Ms. Magny has joined the call this evening. In addition, their architect, James Scatino, is also on the call as well, in case you have any questions for either one of them. I think Lynn, were you gonna share the slides?
Yep, I'm gonna do that right now for you.
So hopefully you all received the the package of information, I guess electronically. But basically, this first slide is a photo that was prepared by the architects where with the actual the addition shown off as you're looking at the house off to the left. And the if we go to the survey, which is the next side. Basically, what we have is a a two-story existing two-story residence, and the Magnies would like to put on a one-story addition to house an indoor swimming pool. And if they, under the two and a half story allowable coverage with this addition, they would be over coverage. But the proposal is to put a 18, 18 foot, one and a half story restriction on the entire new addition, which is allowed under Section 337E1, where you're allowed to have some additional coverage, as long as you don't exceed 140% of the allowable coverage. So basically, we're allowed, if we were to, under this provision, they would be allowed up to 6,333 square feet. We're not going all the way that far. It'll be 6,207 square feet total. The addition itself is 2,213 square feet. And like I said, we're going to put the building restriction over the entire addition, even though really we only need to put a restriction over about half of it. We're 1,106 square feet over the allowable coverage. This is a nice property to do this on. It's a large lot level. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac. There's not a lot of neighbors that are nearby or anyone that would be impacted by this. And as you saw from the first photo, it really does fit in with the look of the rest of the residence. And I guess the next one does actually show the elevation as well. So that's the architect's renderings of the proposed additions. What's off to the left side is the is the new proposed addition with the swimming pool. We're fully within all setbacks. We have reviewed the plans with Health and with the Public Works and with the Inland Wetlands Commission, all were okay with the plans. We did show additional septic and reserve areas. We show and you can see on the next slide, the site plan. We're not necessarily retaining water on site, but we are doing the water, slowing it down before it goes down into the river and cleaning it with the retentions areas there. Let's see, what else do I did I want to say? Oh, and the one thing I would say, the one comment that we did get back from the various departments was with inland wetlands. Previously, it was presumed that this property was fully within a flood zone, but in fact, with the elevation drawings at topographical maps that we've done now, it's it's obvious that it's not. The AE zone is just down at the corner as you see on this on this site plan. So we are doing a FEMA map amendment, and that's underway right now. So that's really about all that I have. There are all neighbor notices went out. At least based on my conversations with Lynn, most recently, we haven't received any neighbor comment through the town. And I was not contacted directly by any neighbors about this project.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the applicant, please?
A question, Kent Turner. Amy, on the FEMA on flood plane, if I understood correctly, you're applying to have that changed, or is that existing as a right?
We're well, so the the proposal is not in it. The proposed addition isn't in the flood zone. What we're applying to FEMA for is current, if you look under the current FEMA maps, the presumed, you know, because the FEMA maps are based on presumed mapping. The presumed elevation of this lot is much lower, so it shows up as if it's as if actually not the addition, but the house itself is within a flood zone. And now that we've done the actual elevations, it's the it is apparent that the zone AE is just in that rear corner. So we're doing a letter of map amendment application to FEMA just to so that the map corresponds with reality.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Would Mr. Chris, if you want? There you go.
Yeah, the pool would be filled by one of those tanker trucks that shows up periodically to swimming pools, wouldn't be filled from the well?
I believe that's correct, but perhaps James or Vicky can specifically answer that question?
Yeah, I would say that that would be typical, not draw from the well, or just have a truck come and fill it up.
You know, because it's indoors, this is Amy's Zabatakas again, because it's indoors, you won't have the same sort of emptying and filling that you would with an outdoor pool, because you don't have to winterize it.
Thank you.
Yeah, the record show that was Mr. Scatino, the applicant's architect who spoke. Any other commissioners' questions? Okay, would anybody from the public like to address this application?
That would be Jay Freda, James Calvi, or the phone number ending in 3975, or the phone number ending in 0210?
Okay, it looks like we're good.
There's yeah, there's no response.
Okay, great. This application's closed. And that concludes the public hearing. So let's take a vote on this application. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
John, hi, it's Kent Turner. I motion to approve. I think that the the addition is appropriate. It's you know, it's setback from from the neighbors. It's the height of the structure is is fairly low. And it, you know, there's just just no compelling reason to to deny it. I believe it should be allowed to proceed.
Great, thank you, Kent. Okay, Dick. Super. Anything for anyone else to add?
I presume, Jim, it's like I assume we would have heard from the neighbors if they had any issues at this point.
Yeah. Sorry, Lynn, go ahead.
Probably no one has contacted us at all.
Okay, anybody else? Anything else to add? Okay, I'll call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Jane Grislecki.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
Don Rad, Don, Dan Radman, sorry, Dan.
Yes.
Claire Tascornia.
Yes.
Ken Turner.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Motion approves, the application is approved unanimously. Okay, we'll now go into regular meeting. So we'll be hearing the applicant. Do not expect to take any public input. 75 Pine Street, upon application to McCann and Lumber Owners for site plan approval of Sections 44C1, 62, 611, 612 to allow for exterior improvements for property located in the business A zone at 75 Pine Street. Who's here to present?
Anthony Domino, Representative to McCann and Lumber Company, and Brian McMahon, our Consulting Engineer.
Okay, great, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Domino.
So, you know, what we're looking to do is actually extend, if those of you are familiar with it, the patio that is in front of Pine Street Concessions to Zoombox and Tony's Deli, it's a pavilion. COVID has allowed both of the tenants in front of Tony's and Zoombox to mandated actually that they 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 have people standing in front, and you guys were nice to allow us to put some tables in front there, and we wanted to maintain that, carry out the design that was done initially when Pine Street was approved. The Pine Street Concessions was approved, and we just at that point opted not to build the patio, but really extend the patio up along the front area, consistent with what's in in front of of the Pine Street Concessions Building, which was a brand new building.
Okay, questions for the applicant?
Jinka's likely, I have one question regarding the parking. Are we, what was the amount of spaces that were required for the new building?
Are you asking?
I'm sorry?
Are you asking?
I'm asking. I think the answer knows the answer.
So in the previous application, they were required for the addition to put up 26 parking spaces. And there were 31 on site, but only 27 were counted as functional spaces.
Okay.
So they were over.
Yeah, okay, so that's.
Yeah, and it didn't count the spaces that were used as an in and out in front of Zoombox or Tony's.
Okay, so Lynn, the space that space or spaces that are effectively being removed were not counted in the first place?
No.
Okay.
And by the way, that's part of the desire behind the application is, I think, as well as aesthetics. And what we've learned about people wanting to sit in front, a nice pavilion and patio outside, is that there is, I believe, though those two parking spaces in front are a hazard and somewhat ill advised. I've seen some pretty big SUVs back up and come in and out of there and and what started all this a while ago, pre-COVID, was some concerns on new ownership's side, that this was perhaps a little bit of a of a of a risk.
Totally guilty of the SUV in front over here.
It's it's not the SUV in front, it's the SUV coming in quickly to get their coffee in front. That's the problem.
Guilty again.
This is Chris Herring. I had a question, the applicant. No, so first of all, it's a very nice design, and I certainly enjoy the idea of extending the attractive brick and the granite. I just had two questions. With regard to the way it is adjacent to the parking on Zoombox side, is is there going to be, I see the railing in the representation here, is there going to be a bollard or other elements that I think you have planters on the other side by the Dante's Pizza? Is there going to be a blocker there such that, you know, from a design perspective, that people don't back into it?
Well, two things. First of all, I think as you back into it, that's that's fairly beyond the side door sidewalk that goes in. And Brian, if I'm not mistaken, that's actually raised, so there's a little bit of a curb underneath there as well, correct? Because of the slope of the.
There is a curve, the slope of, I'm sorry, Brian McMahon, Renneson Meat Engineers, on behalf of the applicant. There is a slope to the existing pavement from the sidewalk in front of Tony's and Zoombox out to the public sidewalk line, Pine Street. And the temporary tables out there, you can tell are pitched and not real conducive to a permanent situation. So what we're doing is raising the patio up, maintaining the grade at the base of the curb along Tony's and Zoombox, and the result is that there is a 12 to 18 inch high curve along the back of the public walk that will return into into the portion of the patio that Mr. Herring is referring to. So there will be a bit of a curve there, running all along that face and a tubular rail similar to what's out there now on top of it.
Chris Herring, thank you for that. And then in terms of just from a grade perspective, is it a ramp? Can you get essentially from, you know, from a baby carriage perspective, I guess, whatever, you know, can you? It looks like you have an access point on the sidewalk that's adjacent to Zoombox, and then that ramp continues up to Tony's? And is that how just the granite pavers and that's how you adjust the grade?
We did, we added that ramp as a as an ADA frankly compliant ramp to the patio itself. And of all of the agencies in town who had an opportunity to comment, the only one comment that was offered was was that very issue from DPW. So we provided a an exhibit last week to the town engineer satisfaction, showing that, there it is right there, showing that the the access points are all ADA compliant to get up onto the ramp, baby carriages and all.
Thank you.
John Chris, I think you had a question?
Yeah. Will the area be covered in any way?
Good question. There is already, there are already awnings extending out in front of Zoombox and Tony's right now that will extend out a little bit into that area. As of now, that's not contemplated, certainly not from the perspective of anything built along the Pine Street side that would create some kind of temporary or permanent roofing. So so no much, not much more than what is already there or extends from the front of the two buildings.
Are any trees or other plantings going to be added or subtracted as part of this build?
None subtracted, and I don't believe any added, although the concept, the concept of beautification and flowers remains to be seen. But in general terms, nothing that's obtrusive or significant.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, the existing concrete apron coming off of Pine Street, that's going to remain?
If you're referencing the one that's the cut closer to Tony's Deli, the answer is no, that's that's going to be filled in. That's the that the the street is going to regain reclaim a parking spot that was lost when the cut was created.
Gotcha. And then the existing, the other existing apron that is west over by Zoombox, that's going to remain correct?
Stays exactly as as is present, yes.
Okay. Art. And Brian, Brian, you mentioned that the difference in elevation, where that new patio comes up to the existing sidewalk or right of way, there's did you say 18 inches, about 18 inch difference?
It's about 12, it's about 12 inches on the west side, on the on the southwest corner, Dan.
Right.
And and it's about eight up to 18 where it meets the extension of the granite steps that'll come out on the on the southeast corner of the patio.
Gotcha. And that's all we're gonna have a handrail, correct?
Correct.
Got it.
And John Chris again, the handrail, I am worried about someone trying to walk over that and falling down and tripping over 18 inches where you can hurt yourself. So there'll be impediments for people not being able to leap over it or fall down it?
I think the idea is to to install something similar to what's out there in front of Tony's now, but 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 to for it to be a building code fall protection compliant railing for the for for the amount of drop.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Chris Herring here again, just I see in the picture a tree well. I see it looks like there's a tree well to the left of the curb cut towards Grove, and then there seems to be a true well in the middle. Is that what I'm looking at?
The tree well in the that's both of those are that's existing. There's already a tree well with the pavers already around there now.
And the tree well, well, they'll remain the tree well.
Right, yes.
Okay, are we all good?
Just a quick question, John. This is Kent Turner. Would you consider putting some, you know, some landscaping in that tree well to or fill it in with bricks? So it matches, it looks a little unfinished and, you know, like the tree died and nothing ever happened after that.
Well, it's existing, and there's no doubt we might be able to find a healthier tree there. And we're certainly, we're certainly open to that. It's an interesting thing, because that tree, I believe, actually is the correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, you know this, I think it's the town's tree, because the town typically maintains it, comes by waters it, prunes it and the like, but we're more than happy to take care of it. As alluded, there's some planters and and trees on the other side as well, which we've kind of beautified. I don't know how big we are in the planter concept. I think we'd rather have a more free flowing approach, but but we'll do our best as we do with all of our properties to beautify it, especially in the spring and the like. And there's there is an electric box there, so we're capable of putting either irrigation or lighting or the details.
Thank you.
But once this is all said and done, there's going to be four risers, three treads, or maybe three risers and three treads, going between the lower existing patio and the new upper patio. Is there going to, and looks like an intermediate handrail as well. Is there any other barrier or anything going to prevent people from cross pollinating, or is this going to be all one big communal patio?
You mean with the Pine Street space?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that that the Pine Street space will stay blocked off. And again, it may not be with the existing, I think we'll wait and determine that, but from a look perspective, the planters, the planters are a little rudimentary. Maybe we'll prefer to continue with the same handrail around the area, uncertain as of now. But no, you will not be able to freely move from the Tony's Zoombox session over to the Pine Street concession section, other than walking out and around to the opening that exists now. That's a little bit of concern of both of all the tenants to make sure that people from one area aren't sitting outside the other and messing it up. And then the the people, you know, tenant X has to take care of cleaning up from the customers from tenant Y that's not adjacent. So we don't plan on combining the two.
Okay, everybody good? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Who we approve? John Chris.
Okay, reasons for approval, please, John?
I see see this as very sympathetic to existing conditions in front of Pine Street Concessions. It looks to be very well designed. I think that area has become a social and business center for the town. And I think this would encourage visitors to our town and be a pleasant amenity for townspeople who care to eat at these places, which are quite popular. I see the environmental impact as as minimal. I think the elimination of that parking area would be helpful to public safety, since it is a very awkward parking area. And I see this as a as a plus for the town.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I heard Jane, I saw Phil, I heard Jane, I heard Jane before I saw, so Jane gets the second. Okay, I call the motion, even though I'm I'm losing my preferred parking spot when I go to Dante's. Nonetheless, I nonetheless vote yes. Jane Grislecki.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
Claire Tascornia.
Yes.
Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, the the application's unanimously approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Thank you all. You too. Take care.
Okay, moving on in regular meeting. Item number three, we already covered. Item number four, Planning Subcommittee Update.
Krista, do you want to give one, or do you want me to just?
Okay. So we hope to meet this month, but we just didn't get our act together. So we're targeting February. We're going to look at affordable housing next for a variety of reasons, but including that under state statute 830J, the town is required to have an affordable housing plan in place by 2022, I think. And so it seems timely, since Lynn's gonna have to be finding a consultant to do that plan, that we start to talk about how we want to approach this. Lynn and I did have a conversation with Mr. Cassavant earlier this month that was extremely insightful. And I think if Lynn hasn't already asked him, I'll spill the beans that we're gonna ask him to talk to a little presentation in February. So hopefully he knows that's happening. Anything else, Lynn?
No, I think that's it. We I think that's it. Yeah, I think you covered it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Krista. Item number five, Lynn, do we have any administrative actions? I don't see any on the agenda.
We have none.
Okay, great. Okay, item number six, update on legislative actions. This will dovetail a little bit to what Krista was just talking about. And the the bad news for those of you who are hoping for a very early night is I'm going to talk for a little while. And then I would also like to have a discussion with the commission about what I'm going to address. And I'm gonna ask Lynn for a little help at times, but if anybody wants to jump in along the way, feel free as well. What I want to talk about is some of the legislative initiatives that have been going on in Hartford, having to do with affordable housing. In Hartford having to do with affordable housing. And, um, the, you know, the, the, the specific driver is, uh, and, and what that before I continue. Um, I, I want to choose my words carefully. Um, this is obviously a, a very emotional issue. Um, and the, 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 the general view is that there is insufficient affordable housing. In Connecticut and more specifically in parts of Connecticut that are, for lack of a better way to put it, are not in the cities. So what I wanna do is I wanna talk about, you know, sort of where I think we are legislatively. Um, there was a two thousand twenty bill which ultimately was withdrawn. I think there was some strongly negative feedback to that bill on, on both sides of the aisle, so to speak. Um, but legislation is being explored again, um, for this time around. Um, and, and as part of that, starting last June, I have been involved in a council. Of planning and zoning chair people in Fairfield, mainly in Fairfield County. Um, and I want to update you on that as well. Um, along the way, what, what I have been doing is, and, and there, there's a lot to get your arms around. But one of the things that I've been doing a fair amount of, both as part of this chair commission. As well as more generally, as I've been researching a lot on some of the issues, some of the concerns, I've, I've been doing a lot of listening. I've listened to multiple sides on the issues that are being, um, uh, debated. I've participated as part of the P and Z chair group that I told you about. Um, I've had a fair amount of discussions with this over, you know, the past six months as well as Lynn. Um, in turn, Lynn, as Krista mentioned, has been talking to Krista and, and also to Art in particular. Um, so as I said, feel free to jump in as I move along, but you know, what I wanna do is sort of lay things out. And then have a discussion with the commission. Um, something else I want to note is, note that is this, this is a discussion that is, that the other chairs. That are involved in my group have been having with their commissions as well. Um, so a little bit of background and, and, you know, probably you, you, you know all this. Um, but just in case, um, the, you know, the, the bottom line view is the fact. That there is a strong feeling among many constituencies within the state of Connecticut that. Connecticut from a housing perspective has a fairly high degree of segregation. Um, and so, for example, about a week or so ago, and, uh, I was on a, uh, a Zoom call. That was put together by Senator Haskell and Senator Anwar, who. Um, introduced the legislation last year, he was on that Zoom call. And along with, uh, a woman named Sarah Bronin, who is the head of an organization called Desegregate Connecticut. She is also a former planner of the city of Hartford, um, and, uh, and her husband, by the way, is also the mayor of Hartford. And one of the things that, as I've gone through my research, by the way, is a, a lot of this is being driven by, I think. You know, some of the challenges and, and now I'm getting into a bit of an opinion, but this is, this research supports this. There's a lot of the experiences that the Hartford area has gone through, um, over the past sixty years or so. Um, but as Senator Anwar put it in this, in the Zoom call, is, you know, his points were one. Connecticut lacks, has a strong lack of affordable housing. I think he pointed it out that. Ninety percent of the non-white population in Connecticut lives on two percent of the land in Connecticut. Um, and he should, and he made the point that, and this is him talking, not me. That racial map of Connecticut shows that Connecticut is segregated. He also makes the point that the towns in Connecticut have not taken care of their ten percent of, of their obligation. To provide ten percent affordable housing, you know, within each of the respective towns and of course, we're referring to eight thirty G. Um, and he also added that he attributes much of this to policies that date as far back as fifty, fifty or sixty years ago. And sort of a little bit more color on where that's coming from is, I actually listened to, and I think some of, uh, uh, some of others of you did as well. A couple of months ago, our New Canaan Library, uh, sponsored a, a talk on segregation and housing in Connecticut. And one of the presenters, uh, pointed out that in the zoning regulations in a town outside of Hartford. I think it was in nineteen thirty-seven, within their regulations, uh, basically pushed for. Um, not allowing all races within certain neighborhoods of that town. Um, and part of the argument that I hear is that this is something that even though it was back in nineteen thirty-seven. Um, they feel that, you know, this is something that has been perpetuated through the subsequent decades. I've also learned, I'm not aware of anything, anything in the history of the New Canaan zoning regulations, but you know, there are some items that. People can find elsewhere in regulations in other towns in Connecticut. Now, where I personally struggle is how do you, you know, make the connection between nineteen thirty-seven and present day? And, and I can see an argument there, but I also struggle a bit with the reasoning. Um, so the continuation of the argument. As argued by, for example, Senator Anwar, and, and I'm quoting him extensively because I've had the opportunity to listen to him. As opposed to, you know, take what might have been on our website or something. Um, the, the conclusion is to, in order to fix this problem, the state must take over certain zoning powers. And basically put them on a top-down basis to the towns within the state of Connecticut. Um, what I'll note is there's a. Couple of items that have been particularly pointed out as being, um. Uh, promoting lack of affordable housing, um, in Connecticut and one of them is special permits. And the argument of special permits, and, and this was interesting, um. Is the argument of special permits is it keeps, uh, affordable housing development out of towns. And it's a way of preventing that from happening. It's a way of preventing builders from coming in and building affordable housing. Um, and this was actually on the Haskell call, was something that was brought up by a legislator. Know she had heard it through from somebody else and she was a relatively new legislator. And, and by the way, one of the things I have been finding is a lot of the legislators who are asking these questions are very open-minded. Um, so in that call, the legislator brought that issue up and, you know, us chairs sort of looked at each other and we were a little bit surprised. Because first of all, as you know, I would guess ninety-five percent of the special permits in New Canaan historically, and I'm picking this out of the. Out of the blue, but I wouldn't be surprised if around ninety-five percent of the special permits in, in New Canaan have been approved. So I think the argument that you're keeping development out of towns like New Canaan through special permits is. I, it, I'm, I'm not convinced. Um, it is a tool, as we all know, is the special permits are a tool. To, uh, allow development, um, in, in the right way, so to speak. Um, that does bring up another issue, which I'm sure a lot of you have heard, is that another term. Um, that, uh, is viewed as keeping, um. Uh, development, lower affordable housing development out of towns is character. Um, the, the idea of character is it's a way for commissions to effectively keep certain things out. Because they say, well, that's not the character within our town. Now, historically, me being on this commission for fifteen years, when we talk about character. We're talking about character to try to achieve things that are in keeping with the long-term town plan. Um, but that's a second item. Um, there's, I think another challenge has been. And again, through my research is there's a lot of disinformation out there and, and it's unfortunate. And, you know, I, I guess it has a lot to do with, you know, the, the internet age and also what we're seeing without our coun- with throughout our country. For example, I went on one website and they had the zoning maps of all the towns and I clicked on New Canaan. And it said four acre zoning and I clicked all over New Canaan. I got four acre zoning all over New Canaan. I clicked on downtown and downtown was four acre zoning. Um, the desegregate Connecticut effort sent a group of college students to go out and do research and get information. And, and I've heard from Lynn as well as other towns that their information was very, very flawed. And we were advised, well, it's up to you guys to correct the information. Now, one of the challenges we have, as you all know, is. We don't have a very big planning and zoning staff, um, so it's sort of difficult to be picking through things and correcting things. Um. I also, I've also found that there is a lock, lack of knowledge as to what the Fairfield cap towns are doing in general. And, and more specifically what they are trying to do in terms of increasing affordable housing. When, when I've listened to some of the groups who feel that we don't have enough affordable housing. And, you know, there's sort of this assumption and you can all guess what that assumption is. Um, for example, nobody has any idea from these groups that New Canaan has an affordable housing fund. So when I, again, when I was on the Zoom call, you know, that was brought up and nobody had any idea. You know, New Canaan has an affordable housing fund. Who would, who would have thunk? Um. So what do they want? And, and here, uh, you know, Art, Lynn, Krista, anybody else, jump in, but I'm going to try to highlight last year's legislation. Um, and again, we're expecting newer legislation and, and I think potentially a positive as I think that with a lot of the feedback. Um, a lot of legislators are, let's say, taking a more open mind or, or not jumping to conclusions. But as I go through it, you know, some of the key things from the legislation last year was they talked a lot about middle housing. And when you talk about middle housing, think duplexes, triplexes, cottage clusters, townhomes, things like that. So they, they sort of talk about middle housing, um, which is perfectly fun. Um, they talk about accessory, um, apartments. In, in our case, think ADUs, accessory dwelling units. Um, essentially there is, is, is that they want ADUs as of right. And, and it's interesting, I, I think about ADUs and, and we've had a lot of discussion about ADUs. And my own view is, in thinking about this, when they're talking about ADUs, they're talking about it more in an urban context. Than a suburban context. So when we grapple with ADUs, a lot of the issues that we're grappling with. You know, quite frankly, I don't think ultimately for us will be all that big a deal. I think it's more of an urban thing where. You need to have more housing. We have a little bit more room. And then, of course, as we always talk about when you have ADUs and. You know, two acre zoning and the like, and the like, I don't think it necessarily comes near to meeting what their objectives are. Right now, our regulations regulate ADUs partly as of right. And partly via a special permit, depending upon the situation and the zone. This legislation would want it to be all as of right. Some of the key thing, and, and as I said, uh, actually before I go forward. You know, in the preamble of the legislation, the objectives of the legislation are to combat, combat discrimination. Um, address patterns of segregation and, and address pa- patterns of disparities in housing. Um, as I noted earlier, character is a term that would not be allowed to use effectively. As it's viewed as a, a, a weapon of segregation, so to speak. So some of the specific things that this legislation was looking to do is to have. Within, and this gets into within a, in a community where there's a transit station. That multi-family, family units must constitute at least fifty percent of the area within a half mile radius. Of that transit station. We have a transit station, it's New Canaan train station. So, John? You're on mute, John?
Yeah, I'm muted.
Uh, I must say we do have two, there's town to jail.
Good point. I should know better. I spent about five years commuting out of town to jail. Shame on me. Um, so that's actually a very interesting point. Um, so that's point number one. Now, of course, when you think about. Transit stations, you don't typically, I mean, New Canaan, you know, being on a spur, being used for slightly different objectives. And, you know, most transit stations, but, but that would impact us. A second key aspect of the legislation would be that you would have to have within. You would have to have multifamily housing within fifty percent of the area within a one-quarter mile radius. Of a concentrated development. Um, the way I read, the root way I read the, read the concentrated development, that means the town of New Canaan. Again, effectively, um, as of right. Continuing on in the legislation, um, they would limit parking requirements. So the concept of parking is you ask for more parking, it increases the cost of development, I think is, is the basic inference there. Um. And then there, in the legislation, there's a series of other prohibited, um, actions. And, and again, the key being that this would be. All as of right. Um, we would be basically required to adopt these as regulations into our regulations. Um, the local planning and zoning commission to go against any of this would have a heavy burden of proof. You know, I read through it and I was like, okay. Um, you would also have model, model zoning guidelines, which I actually think could be a good thing as long as they're not imposed upon the towns. You know, you can always use model zoning guidelines, but this would be more applicable, uh, required to the town. Um, and then you would have an annual four-hour requirement for P and Z commissioners, um, which actually, I guess, quite frankly, is a good thing. You know, we can always use a little bit of training. Um, so that, that's sort of the key points of the legislation, um, Art, Lynn, Krista. And, and I'm using this as an example because this was legislation that, you know, ultimately was removed. Um, but guys, did I, did I get everything right?
But you're muted, Art.
Thank you. I'd add a couple of thoughts, um, John, I thought that was a great summary, but I'd add a couple of things that are common in the field that I do business in. Which is affordable housing investment. Uh, the first is that the two concepts of income. And race are frequently combined and they are very different. And consequently, most regulation and law is actually broken up into two buckets. Stuff associated with the Fair Housing Act. Which is actually protected class-driven and activities associated with the Community Reinvestment Act. Which is very much income-based. The, um, but over time, the, the concepts have become both intertwined and also. To some significant degree bastardized. A- as an example, the primary federal tool which is available for building. Lower income housing is in fact, the low-income housing tax credit allocated to all states by the number of people who live in a state. Clear set of guidelines and rules. Um, those units provide really great housing and it was, you know, it's an important way to help deal with eight thirty G as a topic. But what has happened over time is that the credits have also been broken into, because there aren't resources available. A way to serve senior communities, disa- disabled communities, veterans communities and other. Demographic groups that are considered to be in need of support. Um, and, and it is important to distinguish between income and race. I would also suggest two things that are relatively important for our group. Um, I would recommend that everybody go to, um, some of the very accessible websites. Uh, provided by the government, actually. One is the F F I E C dot gov, which is the Federal Financial Institutions. Interagency Council. Um, if you were to click on that, you can rapidly get demographic and income information. For the three census tracts in New Canaan. Why that's useful is that is what the groups who want to attack zoning use. And in fact, if you look at either the summary for the town or any one of the three census tracts, for example, it would tell you that the west side of town. for example, it would tell you that the west side of town is significantly more affluent than the east side. But the east side is, you know, at two hundred percent of the median income for the state. And and those are the statistics that are driven and and disseminated widely. Um, I spend a fair amount of time in Hartford frequently at, at these sessions. And and they are very serious. The other thing I'd, I'd suggest is that we, as a group, currently need to deal with, and we talked, Lynn and Krista and I talked about this about a week ago. We don't have a good eight thirty G inventory right now. I did reach out to David McCarthy, um, who had the latest one, but you can't manage what you can't measure. And, um, there are two relevant, um, thing for existing eight thirty G legislation. One is we have to know how we're doing against our entire housing stock. And the second is how would we do if we applied for a, um, a continuation of our current abeyance on eight thirty G? And and we do not have to the best of our ability to determine it yet. The only one I could find is two and a half years old. And I believe was calculated prior to the inclusion of the view units, which are going to add to the denominator. So, um, just as a thought, um, I think we need to, and and I did tell, um, Lynn and Krista that I'd be glad to, um, sort of summarize some of this in a presentation, if it's useful. But as an example, the way many communities frequently deal with the income components of this is to build senior housing because a senior can be low income. But by definition, what you end up with, and to a significant degree, we have that in New Canaan, where we have built a lot of low income units in the last decade, almost all of them occupied by people who are white. And and the impending problem of that is that we need to be aware of and measure those statistics. And that's a painful thing for many people to do because it's not a fun conversation.
Thank you, Art. Art, why don't you, um, touch on, uh, the denominator issue vis a vis eight thirty G more normally? And and and, and what I'm going to add is one of the things that the P and Z chairs are trying to do, as I'm sure others are, is to get that fixed. Art, Art, can you talk to that?
Yeah, the, the fundamental concept of eight thirty G is that you take the total number of available housing units in a community. And in order not to be subject to an eight thirty override of your local zoning, ten percent of your units need to be affordable. There are a couple of issues with that. One, which has been played out to a great deal in communities like New Canaan, Darien, Greenwich, even Norwalk, is that the definition of affordable is a very specific federally driven definition. So the notion of, uh, an affordable unit that might rent to someone with a, a retiree, for example, who might have a household income of a hundred and thousand dollars, that is not an affordable unit. An affordable unit by definition has to be someone, a household that makes less than eighty percent of the area median income. Now, there are pros and cons to that because it's divided locally so that you could have somebody whose household income could be eighty eight thousand dollars and could be a local police officer who might qualify for an affordable unit. But the definitions are quite precise. And there are three concepts there, low, moderate, and, um, ma- majority income concepts. And they are very carefully defined when you go to measure eight thirty G compliance. Um, the second concept, which, which John just mentioned, is where you are relative to asking for, um, a temporary suspension of eight thirty G. If you are demonstrating that you both have a plan and you've produced units, you are able to get a relaxation of eight thirty G. Just if anybody doesn't know what eight thirty G allows a developer to do is to override local zoning. The standard policy of many developers, if they want to build something in town, is to begin with a public statement about how they're going to build lots of housing in town and apply eight thirty G, but the math usually does not work. So what we should do as a group is sort of systematically understand the principles of affordable housing, the distinctions between racial characteristics and income characteristics, what our numbers are for New Canaan, how surrounding towns have dealt with that. Many communities have, in fact, for many years now, made, um, any development of more, for example, than ten units, build at least ten percent of units as affordable under definition. In Stanford, for example, if a developer builds an apartment building, they have to either build ten percent of the units as affordable or provide offsetting units elsewhere in town, which is the way it normally gets done in Stanford because a developer can build affordable units, not necessarily in their prime space, but in another space, and they are high quality unit. So, you know, again, it's understanding, for example, even what can be built as eligible under low income rules is actually very important because there are square footage limitations, for example, on what can be built. You can't just take units and say they're my quote, low income units. And another issue which has popped up in our area extensively is you cannot designate units, quote, for residents of the town or retirees. It is a violation of the Fair Housing Act to try to do that. So if you decide to, for example, build affordable housing, as we have done extensively in town, you have to have a waiting list. There has to be a clear priority that allows people to apply for those units. There has to be turnover rules, um, that, uh, ensure that somebody stays there. And there's a minor wrinkle, which can be important, is that when someone is in affordable housing, if they earn more money, they are generally able to stay, which means that even if someone applies for and becomes resident in a unit, if they subsequently make more money, they, y- you may have to produce another unit of housing, though that isn't an enormous risk, it's just something that does happen. I was personally involved in an incident, it's not an issue. But a, a good example is in Stanford, a couple of years ago, where we had refinanced affordable housing in my professional career. And, uh, somebody who lived in that affordable housing had two adult children, uh, both with graduate degrees, both who made a lot of money. And the woman was infuriated that the rent would be increased because her two adult children, both of whom made a lot of money, would suddenly be calculated as the eligible income. And her discounted rent would, would go away. There are issues like that that are very important.
Right. Thank you, Art. Um, and I, I want to come back to some of the things you said. I just, I want to comment, uh, give you a little more brief on this P and Z chair group that I've been part of. Um, and, uh, the group was formed, uh, actually last June. Um, and right now in the group, it was started, uh, probably the drivers were, uh, Danielle Dobbin, who's the Chair of Westport, and Marguerite Albin, who's the Chair of Greenwich. Um, it now includes Darien, Ridgefield, Weston, Wilton, um, and and some participation from Norwalk. And one of the things that I pushed for was to involve Westcog more, and and now they're pretty fully involved as well, as, you know, but you probably all know, Westcog is, you know, think of it as our regional planning agency. And one thing I'll say is, uh, you know, these chairs are pretty, pretty smart, hardworking, really good people. Um, Westcog also has some very good, smart people in that group as well. And, you know, the, the, the objectives of, you know, what we're trying to do is, first of all, to deliver a message that, um, you know, we're competent agencies, each of our planning and zoning agencies. Unfortunately, there's been some chatter out of, um, some of these other groups where, um, they've sort of referred to, and I probably shouldn't say this, but I have it on pretty good advice that some people feel that us, us planning zoning people are quote unquote buffoons. Uh, we don't know what they're, what we're doing. Sort of reminds me of a quote a couple of years ago, um, but I won't go there. So one is just to convey this message that, you know, look, we know what we're doing. Number two is we're actually working on a lot of, you know, really good stuff in New Canaan. And I'll get into, you know, what, with, with some of the additional ideas that are being done. But, you know, so, so that's second. Um, three is, you know, everybody is, you know, to varying degrees are engaged in trying to figure out how we do create more affordable housing um, within each of our respective towns. Um, and we have been, a key thing that we've been doing is we've been, you know, reaching out to our legislators. And we've been letting our legislators know that, you know, they really need to understand what's being proposed here and potentially how that, you know, can impact their constituencies on one hand. And then the other hand, you know, again, as I said, is, you know, we're working in the right direction. But we feel that the way you get these things solved is you get help from Hartford, but you don't get things forced down your throat from Hartford. It's just not the right way to go. And 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 it's interesting, it's, I have to say, it's been a wonderful learning experience for me talking to these other chairs. We should have done it years ago. Because we're, we're sort of all trying to, you know, row the boat in the same direction, but we all have lots of different issues. Um, by the way, I'll say that, um, you know, most of the towns are looking at, you know, our affordable housing fund as a model. And, uh, so they're, you know, reaching out and looking for that. Now, one of the things that, um, going more on that is that, um, we, we have tried to put together, you know, a, a, a list of, of things that we think would be, you know, positive things that all the towns would work on. Now, one of the things I've been clear to the other chairs about is that I, I can't speak for the commission. Only the commission can speak for the commission. So one of the things I asked, uh, Lynn to do is she sent it out to all of you as Danielle Dobbin, who's, as I said, is the Westport Chair. She's put together a list of initiatives that, you know, she, we have been sharing with the legislators, although again, being very clear that, you know, I can't speak for the commission. But one of the things that I want all of you to do, and this has been emailed to you, is, is to review this list. Now, one of the things you'll find in the list is, and and this isn't a negative statement, it's been very much driven by Danielle and very much using Westport as a model. And, you know, one of the issues is, uh, you know, again, we're all a little bit different. But what you'll see in there is, and I want to come back to this in a few minutes too, but the idea of an inclusionary hu- housing zone, which I think is what, you know, Art was alluding to as well. So I would, you know, like all of you to take a look at that, and I want to talk a little bit more about that in a second. A second item on our list is the definition of family. And and what this goes to is, you know, there's concern that, you know, and again, are you sort of related to this? And I'm sure what you're seeing is there's a concern that the traditional definition of the family is perhaps too exclusionary. Three is accessory dwelling units. As I said before, and I think more and more about it, I, I, I frankly don't feel this will be a huge problem for us. Um, I know we, we love to talk about it, we love to debate it, but I'm not convinced it'll be the biggest deal for us, which, which is a good thing. Four is, is an assistance fund, which is, you know, gets more into, uh, you know, a, a financial effort. I'm not, I'm not convinced that that should be a planning and zoning item. Five is a housing development fund. We've got it. So we got that one. Six is incentivizing rehabilitation. You know, Lynn tells me that is probably less of a priority in New Canaan. People just go ahead and, you know, do things less needed here. Um, seven is, we all agreed, and you heard me say earlier, is, you know, we're perfectly happy with, you know, land use training. You know, commissioners having a certain amount of training per year. Eight is a model zoning code, but again, with the key caveat being, you know, give us, give us a model zoning code. Um, but, uh, you know, it's something that we have to be able to adapt to our particular circumstances. And then if she, she addresses, you know, the concept of community character, it, it's not a weapon of segregation, it's simply part of a long-term plan of what you're trying to achieve as, as a town. So I'd ask you to take a look at that, uh, that, take, read the second, um, version that Lynn sent out to you because that includes her comments. So I certainly would love you to see her comments. So my ask for all of you there is to take a look at it and give feedback to Lynn. And then what I want to do is sort of, you know, get a sense of the commission on those items. And then that'll enable me to effectively, you know, represent the commission as I'm talking to my fellow chair people. The, the one thing that, and and this is, you know, I wanted, this is where, you know, I want to come back, and this dovetails into what Krista was talking about, this what dovetails what Art is talking about, is as, as I've thought through this, um, uh, you know, I think we, we do need as a commission, and and this is just me as one commissioner talking right now. Um, I think we do need to take a more immediate focus on increasing affordable housing in New Canaan. And going to Art's point, the way I'm thinking about affordable housing is some of that affordable housing will meet the criteria, the criteria of an eight thirty G or the criteria of some of the, you know, legislative or the agencies that are talked about. Some of the affordable housing is, you know, what I like to think about is workforce housing. You know, so it may not meet specific criteria, but I think it's, you know, I think we need to be thinking about how we add to our housing stock. And, you know, and why is this particularly important now? Because one of the things Lynn and I talked about, and and Krista, you mentioned it, is, you know, we, we do know we've got an affordable housing plan that we have to submit in two thousand twenty-two. So one of the things we could say is, okay, well, let's, you know, let's work towards that goal. Um, the issue that I see with that is we potentially have some significant new development coming online in New Canaan this year, sooner than later. And, and one of the things, and and many of you have asked me this question, is if we have an application, can we condition to an application certain affordable housing or certain workforce housing? Or, you know, however we wanted to find it, what we want to achieve, as Art talked about. You know, you, you have, you have other towns that have certain specis- specificities. And my understanding is if the applicant agrees to it, then that's wonderful. Good, we're all set. If the applicant does not agree to it, and we do not have it in our regulations, then that might be a tougher task for us. So what that says to me is, and you have to agree with me, you have to believe, you know, you have to have the view, let's avail ourselves of this opportunity to diversify our housing stock as new applications come in. And if you believe that, then I think we need to get going sooner than later. And, you know, one of the things I think about this, and I've talked to Lynn about this, is, you know, perhaps we think about, certain regulations, which I don't want to say they're off the shelf, but something that, you know, has been proven and can be put into the regulations sooner than later. And then that can be refined along the way, which is something as a commission, we very often have done with our regulations. And it can also be a find, you know, refined with when we have to submit that two thousand twenty-two study. And, um, you know, and and I think that Krista's, uh, subcommittee is, again, if we believe this is something that we should focus on. And and by the way, Art, you mentioned senior housing, so I, I should have added that as well. So it's, it's, you know, affordable housing as defined by legislation in my mind. It's also workforce housing, and it's also senior housing. But as I think about it, you know, this is something that, you, you know, if we believe it, we need to attack it now. And and I think Krista's subcommittee is, is the right way to, um, to, to, to attack that. The last thing that I'll say, and then I wanted to open up to, to discussion, is, um, the other thing all of you can do as commissioners is, uh, be vocal. You, you carry by dint of your position and your experience. You have the knowledge, you have the expertise. And so I would, you know, encourage you to be vocal. I would certainly, you know, do what, you know, my group of chairs is trying to do, which is, you know, let's let our legislators know, let's let them know about our competence. Let's let them know about the good things that we're doing. Because one of the concerns that I have is if, if you're the majority party in Hartford, you can be under pressure to vote for something. Um, but if your constituency is giving you feedback, you may reassess that vote. Um, so that would be an ask that I would have for all of you. Um, but but going back to, um, But, but going back to, well, let me just open it up to thoughts. I've been talking forever, but, but thoughts. John.
Yeah, I have a couple of points. If he hasn't spoken already to your chairman group, you may want to reach out to Senator Tony Wang. Who is very well informed in this matter and has held several public forums as well with some of his colleagues. And I think he presents a, a viewpoint that's worth hearing. And so if that has not happened, I would very much encourage you to do so.
Yeah, it, it, John, it basically has. There's. Certain chairman are already talking to Tony. I know I missed the thing he did last Tuesday because I heard about it too late and I had another obligation.
At a Facebook Live, yeah. Yeah, but something more formally with the, with your group might be useful, but. You know, some of the other things that have been talked about that aren't in that list, I know Ms. Dobbin, is my understanding, and she's a very strong advocate of the Hartford solution. So. Impression, okay. They've talked about parking too. If you ever try to park in some of our streets, it's dangerous, frankly, even walking on some of them is tricky. And there's no shoulder, people move fast, it's hilly. And so to the extent you reduce parking limits. So that you can have fewer slots per bedroom. Or unit, you know, where, where's the car gonna go? Some of the things that have also been discussed are traffic, so it's not number of cars, but miles driven. And if anyone's trying to negotiate downtown, number of cars really matters. Quite a bit, not just miles driven. Other things that have been talked about besides the transit corridors or commercial corridors. Would also have the multifamily bubble. You know, does that mean Silvermine qualifies? Because there are two businesses there. There's the Art Center and there's the market. So is, is that what's going to be counted? You know, things like that do happen. But I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that there are going to be a lot of issues before us. My understanding is that Cross and Viti, a lot of the properties have changed hands. And that it's now in the hands of a more concentrated developer-oriented group, which is interested, interested in doing things. And we're all familiar with that, those properties there, many of which are old inside of open space. There's also talk from the police commission, as I understand, of a new police station. So the issue becomes, you know, where is that gonna go? Is it where it is now, and they just rehab it, or does it go somewhere else? And if that's the case. Where is someone else? Where is somewhere else? And what happens to the current building, which is right on a state highway, and it's next to affordable housing? So that becomes, you know, town-owned land that can be used for something. So those are various things I'm sure will end up in our, in our docket before long. But I would concur with you that. Understanding where we are with eight thirty G is useful. And I think giving us the, us, the commission, the absolute authority. To require certain developments to have an affordable housing aspect to it, so that we maintain our affordable housing numbers. Is a very good idea. And we may even wish to think about advocating to the town council, which I believe has the legislative authority. To change our, you know, affordable housing fee we charge on real estate transactions, you know, should that be revisited? So those are some things that I would suggest we should, we should think about. Sooner rather than later.
Thank you, John.
John.
Dick.
You mentioned that we should talk. To. You know, legislators or people that we know. It's a good point, but. We don't want to find ourselves talking crossways and going off in all sorts of different directions. So I think it would be helpful to us as commissioners. For someone like, like Arthur's comments, I thought were very interesting. I couldn't take enough notes to keep up with them, but. You know, if he, I think I heard him volunteer a little bit to maybe put together a. An information report. Which I think might be very helpful for us if any of us are talking. You know, to people in Hartford, so that we're. You know, it's not. Everybody saying exactly the same thing, but. Pretty much saying in the same direction.
Anybody else?
I would agree with Dick. I, I, I just think if we all kind of go off on our own. With this, it could create a problem with everybody having a different opinion. So I think if we could. Speak as one voice, so to speak, would be helpful.
I, I have an observation. And, and sort of a question. Knowing that we've already got the Affordable Housing. Act and Affordable Housing Criteria with the eight thirty G. And the percentages required in the towns. That's already being instituted statewide and nationwide, quite frankly. It, it just strikes me as this whole effort seems to be a solution looking for a problem. Am I wrong there? I mean, are, are the current affordable housing measures and efforts? That the towns need to subscribe to and that the state tries to achieve? Are they so deficient and so one-sided that? We need to now reinvent the entire vocabulary of zoning for the state? Because. A minority group of people feel that, and when I say minority, I mean, a small group of people. I'm not referring to race. A, a small group of people feel that. Everything is broken and needs to be fixed.
I, I'd only raise an interesting point. When affordable housing came into being as a concept, which is roughly twenty, twenty-five years ago. There were very, there was very little use of what are called land use restrictions on housing units that were built. One of the takeaways is that nationwide. Even though a fair amount is built every year, the number of units of affordable housing has actually declined in each of the last five years. As old units have been absorbed and are taken into definite, taken into use by people who are. Generally moderate income, but they don't qualify as lower moderate income. I think there are only five states that actually have equivalent legislation to eight thirty G. They are New Jersey, Massachusetts, New York, Connecticut, and Illinois. They are closely linked to highly unionized states, and there's a lot of money that is made. I'll be glad to do what Krista and Lynn and I talked about, which is sort of a six-page, what, what is it? What do you have to measure? What have we done here in New Canaan, which is actually significant relative to other areas? And examples of what else is done throughout the state. You know, I, I mean, that may be helpful. This is not an economics exercise, though. It is very much a political exercise. And, you know, and, and the challenge that I believe our town faces is if you do go quickly. Which is what people do to the website I referred to, which is instantly available and public. The, you begin from a position of weakness in the discussion. Because your percentages. No matter how you look at our town. Have the, you, you can draw a conclusory outcome that. In fact, we are discriminatory because of the composition of the people who live here. Not valid, not my belief. But we need to be aware of what people looking quickly and drafting college students to do bad research will go to.
Art, I'd just like to add to that because you brought it up when we talked, and I think it's an important piece, and I don't know if it belongs in your six-page or not, but. The cost of land here, you know, is an important factor in affordability overall. And so, yes, you know, you can look at the statistics or the demographics of our town and say. You know, generally people make two hundred percent of AMI. But you've also got to look at the, the cost of land.
You know, I, I checked out the prices for the view recently. And you can rent a one-bedroom rent for just about four thousand a month, which is a lot of money. It's more than I paid for my first apartment, I don't know about you folks, but that's, that's a lot. And I'm going to mention two words that are going to be annoying for people, cell towers. You know, there we have. Hartford-driven decisions on placement of cell towers and. While we as a commission have an ability to provide our opinion. To the siding council for cell towers, they basically made their decision on different criteria. And so, you know, that's an example of a. One-size-fits-all Hartford-driven decision. So if you, you like the cell tower legislation, you may like, really, really, really like Hartford-driven. Statewide zoning rules. Because we live in a very eclectic state, some is farmland, very rural, hilly. Swampy. Urban, suburban, and exurban, and. These, and many are historic. Towns with historic downtowns as we do, we have, which we're very proud of and we like to preserve. And so these are very important issues that, you know, central legislation regarding transit corridors and so forth may not be very sensitive to.
Yeah, part about Dan, partly to your point, is, is one of the things that. Our group has struggled with is, you know, are we. Feeding the monster, so to speak. And, you know, there's been a lot of discussion and debate about that, and I think, you know, generally. Where we've come out is, and, and if we can, you know, get the feedback I'm talking about, I'm also happy to continue being part of this group is to, you know, help represent, you know, that more single voice, so to speak. But where we've come out as a group is, so let's make this a positive initiative. So that's why we're going to the legislators and we're saying to the legislators, look, here's everything we're doing, you know. New Canaan has an affordable housing fund, Westport has an inclusionary housing zone, Greenwich is doing this. You know, the point being is we're doing good stuff. We have to put it out there because if you do jump on the net, and, you know, I get, I got something yesterday. Where New Canaan was, you know, called out and somebody implied. That, and, and. Somebody implied that the way you read the transcript is that. For a, I think a. A loft. Room, you need three parking spaces. I mean, this is just silly stuff. But, you know, this stuff is being put out there. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to deliver the, you know, here's what's really going on, at least to the right people.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
I think there's, I think there's. Beyond this zoning effort, just nationally, there's an incredible. Title wave happening with people. Using catchphrases and. And, and classifying people and communities in such a way that. Is completely twisting reality. As to the. Current state of affairs in our town or any town in, you know, in the United States, or whatever you might want to discuss. Someone's gonna be able to use half a dozen key. Key terms that will all of a sudden set, set the discussion on fire and make it a national issue. Which is unfortunate.
Great. Other thoughts?
This is Krista. I'll just throw in that. I fully support pretty much everything you said, and I really. See the advantage, the approach of trying to get something in our zoning regulations sooner rather than later, and then refine it over time as we work. Towards the affordable housing plan that we're required to do. So I'm going to work towards that with the subcommittee.
Right.
Would be, this is Chris Herring speaking. It would be interesting, I think, part of this may be involved in your write-up, Arthur, but just understanding the different levers and tools that the town has already employed, whether it be. Other. Other sort of allowances that the town has employed to work with developers and incent them. Because it sounds like, I mean. Sounds like just listing what we've done in the past would be helpful. To, to help, you know, set the narrative correct. In terms of the tools in the toolbox and the ones that have been deployed. Because, I mean, just, I mean, we've talked a little about parking, but, you know, we talked a little about, you know, increased height and density. But I'm sure there are many others, like the tax abatements and other. You know, rent versus buy restrictions, so all of the different other things that we could put into play. And it'd be interesting to just understand that. And, and I guess. Bit of a newbie question here, but I know with the New Canaan Housing Authority, do we, do we liaise with them and?
Yeah, it's actually, I'm, I'm happy you brought that up, Chris. It was interesting. I'm not going to name the towns, but there are certain towns in which the housing authority and the planning and zoning commission are each other's necks. And that completely shocked me. Because I think we have a phenomenal relationship, you know, it's the housing authority is now run by Chris Hobbs. Before Chris was Chuck. Gene, what was Chuck's last name?
Uh, God, ask me, huh?
Anyway, Chuck, Chuck, anyway. The prior head of the, the, the housing authority was excellent. Scott is excellent. And we have a great working relationship, and hopefully Scott gets wind of what I'm saying. Hopefully he won't disagree. But that's, that's another big positive for the town. Okay. Anything else? Any other thoughts? One of the things that I would encourage you to do is, is if Art. Is presenting to the subcommittee next month, I would encourage everybody to attend. And, you know, the, I mean, it's interesting, we think about the evolution of the subcommittee over the past year, Krista, hopefully you'll agree with me, is. You know, originally said, look, we're, we're going to go through the regulations and, you know, we need to do different things. And, and I think, you know, under Krista's guidance, the subcommittee has now become, you know, more. Focused on specific, more specific issues that have to be tackled, which I think is a great thing. But one of the things that I would, you know, encourage all the commissioners to do is, you know, if you're not on the subcommittee, I don't think Krista will be adverse to you joining it. There's a heck of a lot of work that has to be done. And Chris has been doing a lot of heavy lifting. It sounds like Art's going to be doing some heavy lifting now, but, you know, I would encourage everybody, you know, the good news is Zoom, so, you know, everybody tune in, so to speak. I mean, Chris, any other thoughts on that? I don't want to.
I mean, just as another sales pitch, the good news is we're not able to pull together a meeting every month. So, I mean, you, you're not making a huge commitment if you, you know, come a couple of times a year. And if we're able to do it a couple of times a year, probably more, hopefully more than that, hopefully you'll learn some, we'll all learn some things from each other and move this thing forward.
Yeah, and, and I just think your subcommittee is, is our critical vehicle, because we all know when we go into, you know, regular meeting. I mean, we've had, you know, a bit of an easy thing for the past six, eight months, but. We're going to be getting back into more full schedule mode, and so we all know that there, we really can't do any planning at our regular meetings, so it's really. It goes back to Chris's subcommittee to get the real planning done. So, okay, anybody else? Everybody good?
Just a quick question while we're talking about subcommittee. Is six o'clock a good time before a regular meeting, or is there a better time?
Everybody okay?
As good as any.
It's the best time because it's one night, one. Commitment to time.
Chuck Berman.
Yeah, I know, I was, I already, I already got there, but I didn't want to interrupt you.
Anyhow, okay. Thank you, everybody. I, I know I, everybody was looking forward to much earlier night, but, but I think it was, for me, it was a very helpful discussion. Thank you. Approval of the minutes, December fifteen, two thousand twenty-one. Any issues with the minutes? Everybody good? Okay, it's Zoom COVID rules. I have to read through. Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes? I got Gene as a mover. I got Dick a second. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Gene Grislecki?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Clarence Scornia?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
You're muted.
Kent?
Yes.
Pick Ward?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Kristen Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Yes.
You guys don't want to adjourn? Okay, everybody have a wonderful night. Take care.
You too.